Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our business meeting. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For those of you who are at home watching on TV, we have a nice full crowd tonight, which is unusual. Start with additions, deletions. David?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to delete action item number two, which is the approval of DPS slash Airport Office Secretary.
Second?
It's being deleted because the chosen candidate took another position, and we're not ready to come back with a replacement this time.
All right. Questions or comments regarding the addition or deletion? Seeing none, we have a motion to delete action item number two, approve higher DPS Secretary slash Airport Office Secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That will be deleted.
All right.
Okay. This is not an addition or deletion, but I am going to make a change in the rotation of the action items. We're going to move action item number seven, which is the Tea Hanger Painting Bid. That'll be the second action item that we hear tonight, unless there's somebody, someone that disagrees with that. Janelle's have some commitments, and I'd like to get her out of here quickly, if she's even here.
Yeah.
I see.
There she is.
Where are you?
In the back.
Ah, thanks, thanks, Janelle. Okay, so that's what, that's a change that we'll have. With that, we'll have an approval of the agenda as amended. So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Our agenda is approved. Public comment. This is public comment on agenda items. For those of you, and there's a lot of people that I haven't seen before, it's three minutes, and you give your name and address, if you would, when you come up. David, do you have a timeout, please? I can't. Can you, if you do, let me know when it's two, two minutes and thirty seconds. All right. Do we have anybody that wants to comment on an agenda item? Yes, please. Margaret, how are you tonight?
I'm well. How are you?
Good.
Margaret Shelton, Bellevue Road. The topic I'm commenting on is the Fresh Start topic. So I've expressed my thoughts about Fresh Start at several meetings, and I'm hoping that tonight we'll have some closure for the residents. As a township and a community, we need our residents to know ordinances can't be twisted for a business benefit or just abused in any way. Our residents living in designated residential homes should not have a concern that a mental health facility will be implemented in their neighborhood or right next door. I want to compliment, I think, the Planning and ZBA Commissions handled the meetings very well, and I compliment them on that. I also want to thank all of the residents who came out and supported their community, working together and following the law. In closing, I think we need to look ahead and start developing lessons learned with next steps when we have things like this occur. I think we have a lot of TGWs and TGRs. That would be things gone wrong and things gone right. And I think if we develop a lessons learned document after things like this occur, and we make sure that the things gone wrong can't happen again, because we know what they are, and we know we can do better moving forward. So as a community, I think, you know, we can address those things efficiently and in a time, more timely manner than we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Did you see Mickey off the podium? Did you see her through the podium? And the young lady, too. Can you see through the podium, I mean?
The young lady, please.
Am I the only? I'm not sure if I'm the young lady.
I, I, Mickey, I don't know how to.
I'm not sure if I'm the young lady. Hello, my name is Heather Chocky. I live at 28769 Album R Drive, Groseal, Michigan, 48138. My comments and requests tonight are around transparency and communication around the Toll Bridge. Some of us know the township has entered into discussions with the bridge company several months ago to investigate buying the current pay bridge. This has been ongoing for several months with no official communication from the township. Anytime this issue has come up personally between myself and other islanders, I'm bombarded with questions, because I seem to have at least a high-level understanding of what's going on, but I have no official source of information to point them to. I fully understand what a non-disclosure agreement is and how it works, but I also believe, at least at a high level, updates could have been provided on timing and more information to come. Silence breeds fear and mistrust of the important work the Township Board is doing. I heard about tonight's board meeting, two review and approve language that will appear on the November ballot through a well-moderated but unofficial Facebook page for our community. The date of today's meeting is posted on our website, but I have not been able to find an agenda posted there. Further, no notice of a meeting or agenda was posted on the official Facebook page or for the township, website, or Code Red. I would like to highlight tonight that this is a monumental decision for our community. This is not the first time, in my recollection, that things have been discussed and decided behind closed doors and without public input. You're asking roughly 10,000 residents of this small community to make an informed decision on $59 million-plus investment. I believe it is your responsibility to publish and host multiple public information sessions, frankly, before now, but certainly multiple sessions between now and November 5th, 2024, when we also have so many important things to consider on that ballot. I would expect that you list the dates, times, locations, and formats of those information sessions tonight, but if not tonight, certainly by the end of this week, August 16th, 2024. 10,000 constituents deserve better communication and representation as we look to understand the details of what is being expected of us when we vote this vote. Multiple forms of communication between the township and general public exist, including but are not limited to official Facebook Township communication, Code Red flyers, which I believe it is worth the expense to put these out, to inform voters, physical signs at major intersections, email or text. I fully believe the township is.
Thirty more seconds.
Okay, capable of getting this information out through multiple information threads, which you have access to, and I would ask you to please show your respect for the voters of Groseal and share the vital information we need to make decisions that will affect our community for generations to come through multiple communication channels.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jerry Hatley, 24128 Lyons Road, Groseal. I just wanted to ask some questions. I know I can't get answers tonight, but these are questions I feel the residents of Groseal should have at least confident that all avenues have been looked at. Did we consult with the Manning Maroon Company regarding how many freighters will be passing through that bridge in a 24-hour period? A maximum and a minimum amount of freighters? Second question. Have we researched the maritime law regarding the right-of-way freighters? Can we slow them down? Can we speed them up? Have we researched that? Have we looked into suing Wayne County and let them buy the bridge? Since they were delinquent on repairs, they've been mentioned for years, and they let them go, so why don't we let them buy it? Have we checked with the Army Corps of Engineers on emergency plan to put temporary bridge in case we have emergency plan? How long would it take? Can we stage materials ahead of time, like at the airport? Have we looked into storing materials at the airport for the temporary bridge? Have we looked into the feasibility of a new land bridge, like the one in Belle Isle? Since there won't be any freighters going to Edison anymore? Have we looked into a causeway bridge that ships can pass underneath? What if we buy the toll bridge? Is Wayne County going to desert their bridge? If we have ours where we can haul semis, can they do that legally? Can they just say, "We no longer are going to afford a bridge"? Have we looked into... I feel that before we've spent up to $59 million, that we need to have these questions answered, and did we look at all avenues instead of having the blinders on, "Let's just buy a bridge"? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Mickey?
Mickey Bartlett, 8949 Void Avenue. So I want to talk a little bit about the timeline. You know, I've been in enough transactions to know that due diligence can take a long time, even fill in a data room with every single thing that you need, including engineering reports, financial reports, and everything else. And I understand the non-disclosure agreement. At this point, though, I haven't even made up my own mind on whether I would vote for it or not, because I don't have the information. And so what I recommend is that you have written materials, because what's happening right now is it's all going around on social media, and it may or may not be right. And if you do professionally-prepared written materials, approved by your attorney, then what can happen is, for example, you can have one sheet that shows a resident. For example, I use the pay bridge all the time. What am I paying right now in mills for different things? What additional mills would this be? So what would my sample taxes be, right? Maybe it's a lot, maybe it's not, but I need to see it in writing. So to kind of put a one-pager together. Also, the timeline. So we understand due diligence has happened up to this point. What are the next steps? Because right now, it's hitting us cold, and so I would think that you're trying to get this information on the ballot for November. I don't know if you've made an offer to purchase conditional on getting the funds or not, but some kind of timeline that shows us what the next steps are. Also, any alternatives that there are, along with the risks and the costs of them. Again, buying the bridge may turn out to be the best solution, but without having all that information that you've been told, and you've met with the attorney, and you've talked to Paul Smoke and the other ones, we're kind of starting from scratch. So we're looking for anything we can find out. I do recommend that they be professionally prepared, and I even started on social media to say, "Here's the kind of things that we would like in terms of information, so that we can better understand this transaction." Okay? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mick. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name's Linda Kalash. I live on West River. My concern is you're proposing the $59 million to purchase this bridge, but there's going to be a whole lot more money that no one's talking about. That's a big concern for me. And if you want to put it on the taxpayers' back, some people, that's going to break their back. So I really, really would love, like everyone else is saying, please, give us more information and think the big, the really wide scope of what could happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Bill. How are you, sir?
Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Bill Heile. This is a serious night. I'd like to talk. I live on East River. First of all, with Fresh Start, this, the issue has been reviewed and discussed and carefully thought out for a considerable period of time, and they have come up with a thumbs-down, if you would, on that issue, and I think that we should respect the people who have put their time and effort together to make a choice and to affirm that. Now, getting back to this bridge, the fact of the matter is that we need to have an ability for a bridge to take care of us when the other one, the Parkway Bridge, is closed down for repair. And when we have that control, that's important. I've been privileged enough to know that, from talking with people, that there are plans, and we're not going to go and get $60 million all at once. We're going to have revenue streams coming in that will help to fray that. I think that one condition I would suggest firmly to be considered seriously is that if, because it does, you acknowledge even in that, that it's a possibility that things could go higher out of the taxpayer's pocket, so to speak, that if adjustments ever should have to be made, we don't want that, we don't plan for that, we want to be careful with it, but should that be the case, that those adjustments be made not with essential services. Don't have police, don't have fire, don't have sewage. Whoever be the ones that take care of it, that the more non-essential services, like, well, we have the drainage thing where we give people, I think it's $5,000. Maybe forego that for a year. Or do something with recreation somewhere, or the horse farm. I mean, those people aren't going to like it, but sometimes you have to sort of, you know, hike up your jockey shorts and hang in there. I think that I'm in favor of it. I've had respectful conversations with people who don't favor it. I have to tell you that I have been through a thought, not unlike what the first lady who said. I mean, I would have preferred we have more time to understand it, and it hasn't worked out that way. But the way my mind works, the circumstance is what it is, the problem is what it is. We have to do something with it, and I'm saying we should affirm the opportunity to take control on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Is there somebody else? Yes, sir. Somebody had, somebody had their hand up. Yes, sir.
Frank Garner Blaveld Drive, Groseal. I just wanted to, just the information that was provided by Margaret, the copy of the ballot proposal and language. I just think at this time in our venture here in Groseal that this is not a time to put something like this on a ballot and vote in November with the upcoming and changeover of the board itself. My thing is, is that we're only looking at purchasing a bridge that needs repairs. We don't know how long that's going to be down. There's no information on that. And I believe that Wayne County will probably see us as, if we buy a bridge, let's let this one go. That one gets closed down, that's our, that's our lifeline. It's like cutting our necks. We have no commerce. We have no... That bridge, did you guys want to buy? Cars and pickup trucks. What is that? That's not viable for us right now. I just find it hard to believe that we would go into this blindsided, put it on the vote in November, and then see us fall flat face with the new board and have them have to figure out what has happened. And I know for one, I can't afford more taxes. It's just ridiculous. And I know we're a small community. I love our community. That's why I'm here, standing and talking in front of all of you. But this is, there's just so many things that are just not being looked at. Putting it on the ballot and saying, "Hey, we got to buy this. We got to have this second bridge." Hey, I'm all for that. But let's not take into consideration that Wayne County might say, "Hey, they got a bridge. Let them take care of it." They might understand this, we can't even manage that bridge. That bridge has to be outside managed. They don't allow you to buy a bridge and maintain it. We have to find an outside company. Where's the money? Because that's money that's not in this 59 million? Thank you.
I thought there was another hand back there. Yes, sir.
Tom Melvesto, 8049 Brookshire Drive. Been a resident on this island since 1951. I've seen more things happen than some cases I care to remember, but this is probably one of the worst, worst times that I've seen this township having to face. It's not a, it's not a good, there's not a good answer to this one way or the other. But I think there's some questions to be, to be asked. The period of time that the county bridge was down, 100% of the traffic going to the mainland went over the county, went over the toll bridge. I guess my question would be to the Groseal Toll Bridge, in the last 10 years, how much, how much money has been spent on structural maintenance? Not superficial paint jobs, lighting, but actual structural maintenance? Because it's awful funny that all of a sudden, you can't even take an aluminum boat over on a trailer, they've reduced the weight limits. It's also suspect that Wayne County Bridge has lowered its, its weight limits as well. I, you know, I look forward here, we've just, under this current board, during that period of time you've been in place, we have, the voters have approved $100 million in debt, schools, wastewater treatment, roads. There's a pending lawsuit against four members of this board. That could lead, if it's, if it's found in favor of the plaintiff, could be millions of dollars. All of a sudden, we spent $100,000 on a, on a, on a survey, on a, on an engineering study for that bridge, only to find out that it's, it's in much worse shape than anybody has even imagined. But yet we're willing to spend $15 million to purchase it and another 39 million, whatever it comes out to, to repair it with no guarantees that it, you know, what's the lifespan? What's the overall lifespan of this thing moving forward? So, you know, in the next 10 years, how much money are you going to have to put into this thing just, just to maintain it? Then I question the urgency of it. And I say that only because, as the other gentleman brought up, there's a new board going to be in place very shortly. And so this board is going to put a burden of a, of a purchase like this, and it's not a shirt that you can return back to retailer and say, oh, it didn't fit, I didn't like the color. Once you bought it, it belongs to you, it's not going back. So what is the urgency of putting language on the ballot tonight?
You have 30 seconds, Tom.
And then, and then, and then expecting us with a series of meetings to vote to approve or deny it come November? The urgency, I just don't see it being there right now, and it's unfair to the new board coming on. So that's, that's my, my comment for the evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, Greg. Good evening.
Greg Carmison, 21228 East River Road. You know, first of all, I want to comment on the bridge situation. There's been a lot of comments already made and I'm not going to repeat them, but I agree that transparency, the process is critically important on this decision. And I, I think, just from monitoring the social media over the weekend and reading, talking to people around town, ideally, it would have been best to have had public hearing and discussion before this was actually brought to the, brought to the board for the vote to put it on the ballot. And I think that trustee DeBose has talked about that and others have too. Jameson Jaeger, trustee, and trustee Porserelli have all made comments about the importance of transparency and accountability and, and the process. And, you know, unfortunately, we are where we are tonight. And as I understand, you're going to explain why we're, why we're having to put this on the ballot tonight. And there's a lot that I want to listen and hear before I reach any conclusions. But the one thing that I would like to, to support is what Bill Heil just said. If this is going to be put to the vote of people, if there's a way to offset the tax increase that you're proposing for the purchase and maintenance and, and operations, I would like to suggest, and I think others on the board have already suggested this, that there be some type of offset to township non-essential services so that the people won't have a tax increase. Because what we've saw, I think earlier this year with the police millage increase failing, that so many people on the island right now are at a point where they're just not willing to pay one penny more for taxes. And that comes even at the expense of public safety. And we know that, I think this is the first millage that's ever failed in the history of Groseal for a police millage. I'm told with, you know, of course trustee Porserelli was chief of the police, longest serving police officer in Groseal history, and talking with him, there's never been a police millage that's failed. And we had a police millage fail this year, and I think the reason it failed was people are at a breaking point with inflation, with, with their other expenses, they're just not prepared to pay more taxes. So
30 seconds.
With this proposal, I would just suggest if there's a way to amend the language that is in, that you're, you're going to vote on tonight so that there's an offset so that people can vote for this without raising their taxes, I, I agree. And that's what Bill Heil was saying, is give us, give, give the citizens an option to approve this without raising their taxes. And I agree 100%. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Haven't seen you for a while.
I missed you, Jim.
I'm Zee Blaveld. I'm so glad to see these people come here tonight and voice their opinion in there. They've come very well prepared, a lot of good comments, but we also have a lot of questions. We survive strictly here mainly on residential tax dollars. $60 million project is not something you just sneeze at. I know Mr. Smoke, he's done a lot of good things for Groseal, and he's a very intelligent man. But I also know this, he wouldn't venture into a $60 million project without seeing a engineering report or a business plan, and quite frankly, neither can I. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis David, I live on Park Lane. I just have one comment, and that is, since we have a board that's leaving and a whole new board coming in, I think you, you guys, putting this proposal on is a recipe for disaster for the incoming board. They're going to come in and have a burden put on them that's going to be beyond, how many years of budget are you proposing for this one little project? And I think that you're putting an undue burden on not just the taxpayers, but the board that's going to come and have to do, undo, or repair, or maintain whatever kind of decision you make on this. Everything you're hearing kind of sounds opposed to me. Maybe I'm wrong.
Anybody else? Is there, do you, do you see any more hands?
Brian has three.
Brian, do you have anything?
Good evening, yes, I have three comments tonight.
Do I have to time you, Brian?
Yes, you do.
The third one, you might have to, the first two, no. First one, David Moxlow, East River Road. It seems to me that instead of pouring $59 million worth of perfume on pig, it would be wiser to use the money towards a permanent causeway over the Trenton Channel located at Parkway. If Alaska can get a, if Alaska can get a $4 billion bridge to nowhere, our elected legislators should be put to task with 59 million in seed money. Janet Grande, East River Road. So much controversy on social media about purchasing the toll bridge. My first question is, are grants available to help with purchase and or repairs? Has anyone looked into state and federal grant money? Leave no rock unturned in solutions. Second is not a question, but a statement. Residents, taxpayers need to be more informed of purchase before putting on November ballot for millage. Township needs to have public meeting for this vote of a lifetime when so much is at stake. Not everyone is on Facebook. Please, board members, don't just listen, take action, it is your responsibility, both current and new members, just voted in. My third and final, Mary Brezhnahan Bellevue. The township board will be voting on the language for the millage for the purchase of the toll bridge. Residents did not know anything about this until a candidate posted the information on Facebook. Just because you have it on your agenda does not mean that citizens should be aware of this action. It even sounds like board members were told to be quiet about it. The township board should be a team, and it hasn't been that way. The township board has been working on this purchase for a year now, has been explained that it is taking time because it is a huge decision to be made. So suddenly, a huge decision that this community has to make is given to them in rushed manner. No informational meetings planned as of yet, and we are only about two and a half months before the November, November election. Early voting starts sooner than that. Very unfair to the residents. Also, the township board paid a lot of money to have this bridge inspected. When do we expect the bill for that? Seems like we are always making it easy on Wayne County. We took over the roads that we will be paying for, paying on for 15 years, and now you're asking us to pay on a bridge for 30 years. That does not include repairs and other costs that can happen during this time. You need to sit back in your seats and rethink why you are a township board member. You were not elected to take advantage of the residents and confuse them. You were elected because citizens trusted you to represent this community in the best interest of the residents of Groseal. Show that compassion by voting no to this rushed millage language. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brian. One more time, I'll ask any, any other, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Please come forward. How are you? Really haven't seen you for a long time.
I got to, my name is Ron. I live on Gro Road. I got to agree with everybody that made their comments tonight, okay? I'm, I'm very, very pleased that some people finally come here and all that. What I want to say is about 10, 12 years ago, I brought to the, the acting board then about some problems and concerns I had with all this. Seemed to go unrecognized, I was called some names. In the meantime, I've, I've communicated with some, I'm not going to get specific, but when I, when I asked about Plan, you know, Plan B and if something should happen to the Wayne County Bridge, I was abruptly told it was none of my business. I think we should have been talking to Wayne County for a long, long time about this, not just rush this and, and take a vote on, on buying, buying a bridge without really, really, really looking into it. And, and the general public, I've got people calling me every day, asking me what's going on. Quite honestly, I just, I've ignored it because I don't ever think that anybody's going to get serious enough to, to do the right thing. And I think a vote of no would be a reasonable solution right now and let the new board start handling it. A new board comes in and, you know, they get pretty, you know, geeked up about, you know, trying to do a good job. And you're all here from your heart trying to do a, you know, to try to, try to do a, you know, a good, honest representation. But quite honestly, I, I haven't seen this township represent the public on anything important that makes any sense. So I, I had other comments and everybody's kind of covered them, and, and I, I got to agree with it. I think we need, we need a little more time. Or we could go to Wayne County and say, look, you know, you want to reduce our Wayne County taxes and, and, you know, pay for some of these costs with the public. Of course, who knows what's going to happen in November, you know, with inflation and everything else, but everybody's being put out of, put out of the box here, so. Anyway, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go on, and I know my 30 seconds is, is probably You're right there. I'm close? Well, you know what? I'm going to tell you something. See, that's another thing, something this important should be given more than three minutes when somebody, a lot of people out here had a lot of very good things to say, reasonable things. Okay? I used to come here to try to inspire everybody, and that kind of didn't work. The township sort of just blew me off. And I, I, I think this would be a good, good option for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
So I did write down everybody's comments, and I think we can probably answer most of them, so.
Yeah, and they, yeah.
So we're, we're tracking, I got, I got a list, so we'll answer what we can.
We'll, we'll, in our discussion of that item, we'll talk as much as we can because of the confidentiality agreement about a number of the things. And Derek, I believe we have somewhat of a timeline and why we are here, where, why it had to be like this. It, believe me, it wasn't because we were dragging our feet on anything. We're following a very, very specific timeline on how things have to be done. You can't put one, one foot ahead of the other, you have to do things in order. So hopefully, when we get to that, that action item, we'll have some answers for you. With that, Consent Agenda.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 24-041. That consists of minutes of July 22 regular meeting, minutes of the July 22 closed session, minutes of the August 1 closed session, check register is dated through August 2, 2024, and approve, excuse me, approve 33rd Judicial District Court Annual Financial Report.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda 24-041, which consists of the following. Minutes of the July 22, 2024 regular meeting, minutes of the July 22, 2024 closed session, minutes of the August 1, 2024 closed session, check register dated through August 2, 2024, and approval of the 33rd Judicial District Court Annual Financial Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Our Consent Agenda is approved. All right. With that.
Jim, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
It just, and if I miss this, I fully apologize. The action items, I know you moved up seven to two, correct?
Yes.
Did we move up? Did I miss this? Did we move up since we have so many people here?
Number six?
Yes.
I mean, we, yeah, we know the people are here for action item number one and for action item number six.
And six, did we move six up or?
We did not move it up, but I'm not opposed to move it up.
Can, can we, well, there's, I mean, they're all here and it's a wonderful thing they came.
After, that'll be the third one.
All right, thanks.
Is, is that okay with the board?
Support it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make, just makes more sense.
That's fine. Starting with that, Kyle, I'll start with you. You have action item number one.
Sure, I have an action on a special land use request at 23285 Meridian Road. Can I get a support?
But we have to read the whole.
Just read the whole recommendation?
Yes.
The Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby accepts the recommendation by the Groseal Township Planning Commission to deny the special land use request for 23285 Meridian, Lot A Supervisors GI Plat #30, and that it fails to meet the requirements set forth in Section 285-22.3. More specifically, the special land use request does not meet the following criteria listed under Section 285-22.3. 285-22.3a, the proposed special land use is not compatible with and in accordance with the general principles and objectives of the township's master plan because it will not preserve the neighborhood character or protect the privacy of existing residences. And 285-22.3b, the proposed special land use is not compatible use is not compatible with adjacent uses because allowing use of the property is a fee-based religious retreat and therapy center is a significant departure from the well-established residential use of the property and surrounding properties.
Second.
Thank you. Comments, questions for Kyle?
Can I ask for clarification, Jim?
Absolutely.
Okay, on this, just to make sure for the people and for us, the Planning Commission voted one way. We're voting to deny it, so a yes vote, just so we're clear and the people are clear with it, a yes vote would be to deny this for fresh start.
We are.
A no vote would be virtually to say it's okay.
Correct.
Just so that's clear, that was asked of me earlier, and I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. The board is voting on accepting what the Planning Commission requested, which was a denial of the land use. And so, as Joe said, a yes vote will be accepting that denial. A no vote would be going against the denial. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion that the Grozeal Township Board of Trustees hereby accepts the recommendation by the Grozeal Township Planning Commission to deny the special land use request for 23285 Meridian, Lot A Supervisor, GI Plot #30, in that it fails to meet the requirements set forth in Section 285-22.3. More specifically, the special land use request does not meet the following criteria listed under Section 285-22.3. 285-22.3a, the proposed special land use is not compatible with and in accordance with the general principles and objectives of the township master plan because it will not preserve neighborhood character or protect the privacy of existing residences. Section 2.85-22.3b, the proposed special land use is not compatible with the adjacent uses because allowing use of the property as a fee-based religious retreat and therapy center is a significant departure from the well-established residential use of the property and surrounding properties. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Planning Commission's decision is accepted, and the land use is denied. Special land use is denied. Thank you. Action item number two was deleted. We are moving action item number seven up next. And David, I believe that's yours.
Based on the recommendation of the Airport Commerce Park Manager, Grozeal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the processing of a pre-award bid bulletin to Blast Tech LLC in the amount of $89,438 for the tea hanger painting and an additional $7,700 for the blasting of rusting surfaces preparation. Therefore, the total amount of the bid award to Blast Tech LLC is $97,138. This approval is contingent upon approval from the Airport Commerce Park Commission.
Support? Questions or comments on this action item? Seeing none, we have a motion based on the recommendation of the Airport Commerce Park Manager that the Grozeal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the processing of a pre-awarded bid bulletin to Blast Tech LLC in the amount of $89,438 for the tea hanger painting and an additional $7,700 for the blasting of rusting surfaces preparation. Therefore, the total amount of the bid award to Blast Tech LLC is $97,138. This approval is contingent upon the approval from the Airport Commerce Park Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Janelle, you're all set. Thank you, Board, for that. Okay. Now, moving around again.
And number three?
Add the bridge.
We are going to deal with action item number six, which is to approve ballot language for Toll Bridge Bond. Recommendation is a resolution submitting, and people, please bear with me, and I have to read this whole thing. I will read it once, and only once because that won't change. So we have a resolution for the Grozeal Township Bridge Bond Proposal. Whereas, the Township Board of the Township of Grozeal has determined that it is necessary to acquire the Grozeal Toll Bridge and construct renovations and improvements to the bridge, together with all related site improvements, the project. And whereas, the Township Board has determined that the Township Board should borrow money in an amount not to exceed $59,740,000 and issue general obligation unlimited tax bonds of the township in one or more series in such amount for the purpose of paying all or part of the cost of the project. And whereas, the Township Board has determined that a proposal to issue the bonds for the project shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the township at the general election to be held in the township on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, Election Day. And whereas, in order for the board bond proposal to be submitted to the qualified electors, it is necessary for the Township Board to certify the ballot wording of the proposal to the township clerk and to the county clerk of the County of Wayne, the county clerk, as required by Act Number 116, Public Acts of Michigan, 1954, as amended, the Michigan Election Law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the following bond proposal shall be submitted to a vote of the qualified electors of the township on the election date. Grozeal Township, Grozeal Toll Bridge Bond Proposal, shall the Township of Grozeal, Michigan, borrow the sum of not to exceed $59,740,000 and issue its general obligation unlimited tax bonds in one or more series payable in not to exceed 30 years from the date of issuance of each series for the purpose of paying all or part of the costs to acquire the Grozeal Toll Bridge and construct renovations and improvements to the bridge, together with all related site improvements. The estimated millage to be levied in 2025 is 1.6745 mils, or $1.67 per thousand of taxable value. And the estimated simple average annual millage rate required to retire the bonds is 1.6814 mils, or $1.68 per thousand of taxable value, including anticipated revenues generated from the operation of the Grozeal Toll Bridge to pay debt service on the bonds. If the anticipated revenue generated from the operation of the Grozeal Toll Bridge are not available to pay debt service on the bonds, the estimated millage to be levied in 2025 would be 2.4023 mils, $2.40 cents per thousand taxable value. And the estimated simple average annual millage rate required to retire the bonds would be 3.3066 mils, $3.31 cents per thousand dollars of taxable value. The ballot wording of the bond proposal is hereby certified to the township clerk and the county clerk of the County of Wayne for submission to the township electors on the election date. The township clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file this resolution and to complete any such forms, certificates, or documents as may be required by the county clerk to evidence the foregoing certification and/or submission by no later than Tuesday, August 13, 2024. The township clerk and the county clerk are hereby directed to: a) post and publish notice of last day of registration and notice of election as required by the Michigan Election Law; and b) have prepared and printed, as provided by the Michigan Election Law, ballots for submitting the bond proposal at the election. Which ballots shall contain the proposal appearing herein or the proposition shall be stated as a proposal on the voting machines, which ballots may include other matters presented to the electorate on the same date. The estimated millage rate in the first year and simple average annual millage rate set forth in the bond proposal, which have been prepared for the township by Benzinski &amp; Company Municipal Finance Advisors, financial advisors to the township, are reasonable estimates of such millage rates based on current assumptions. Almost done here. The township may incur expenditures for the project prior to receipt of proceeds of the bonds and may advance money for the purpose from funds available to the township to be reimbursed from proceeds of the bonds when available. The township makes the following declarations for the purpose of complying with the reimbursement rules of Treasury Reg Section 1.150-2 pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended: a) if the ballot proposal is approved by the electors, the township reasonably expects to reimburse itself with proceeds of the bonds for certain costs of the project which were paid or will be paid from available funds of the township subsequent to 60 days prior to today. The maximum principal amount of debt expected to be issued for the project, including issuance costs, is $59,740,000. And c) a reimbursement allocation of the capital expenditures described above with the proceeds of the bonds will occur not later than 18 months after the latter of the date on which the expenditure is paid or to the date the project is placed in service or abandoned, but in no event more than three years after the original expenditure is paid. A reimbursement allocation is an allocation in writing that evidences the township's use of the proceeds of the bonds to reimburse the township for a capital expenditure made pursuant to this resolution. All resolutions, and this is number six, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed. And then it will have the names of the members of the board who were aye or nay. Yes.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
It was a beautiful reading. I do have to add that at the end of the ballot language itself, we need to add yes or no.
And that would be, if you could just bring me back to number two?
It's right after the Grozeal Toll Bridge Bond Proposal. It would come right there.
Okay.
So just before number two.
This would be in number one, at the end of number one, and the wording is?
Yes or no.
Yes or no. In other words, it's going to be a yes or no box that you check on the ballot. Thank you.
And we had to, that had to be part of this actual resolution today.
Okay. Got that in there. Do you have that, Brian? I'm sure you do. Okay. That was a lot of words. That's a lot of doing. That is what the proposal will be. Now, how did we get here? Why are we here today? Why is this? Obviously, this bond proposal, as it's said in there, this language had to be done prior to tomorrow because we have to get it to...
Did we get a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Thank you. I talked so long, I forgot what was going on there. So we're all set there. So we'll get into the history of this and why we are here today. This did start, I was contacted, I believe, June of '23, or some time ago. And we started the process of looking into this. It is a process that you cannot, like, we couldn't say, hey, you know what? We might do this, so let's go out and get money. Can't do it that way. You have to follow a certain process. We had to follow, can we do this? We had to find that out. Do we want to do it? There's talking with the people who are selling the bridge. They asked for an exclusivity agreement and a confidentiality agreement. So there's a lot of questions, and good questions. All of you people ask good questions. We can't specifically answer a lot of questions because of the exclusivity and confidentiality agreements. That's why.
We shouldn't have worked on this.
Well, it didn't come up years ago. It did not come up years ago to this board. And we won't take, we will not be taking questions or comments from the audience as we're talking about this. I'm sorry, Ron, but we're following procedure here. So we have been looking into it. If you've been following us, every consultant that we had to hire was brought before the board and voted on to do or not to do. And as I say, the millage language is there. Now, I hope you all realize, this is millage language that we're voting on tonight. That'll be on the November ballot. We're not forcing or doing anything to you people, other than you will have the ability to vote on this, which you will be the ones to decide, not us. You will be the ones to decide whether we should or we shouldn't. Derek, quickly, I'm going to deflect over to you, and if you would run through the timeline, if you will.
Yeah, I've got a laundry list of comments here, and I don't mean to step on any members of the board's toes on overstepping my bounds and my responsibility here to make comments on things, but it is obviously very important topics. It's one of the most important topics, I think, that, you know, this community will face. So making sure that the community is aware of the information that is necessary for them to make... them to make an informed decision is, I think, of the utmost importance. I think it's the township's intent to definitely provide you with as much information as we possibly can. And I think we're confident that once our public information efforts are completed, you will feel confident that you have enough information to make a decision.
And I will just want to emphasize on that. We want to give you, and we've always said we were going to have meetings, put out as many ways as we can, the information, because this is, don't, I mean, we're all residents too. Yes, we have, we're a little privy to a little more information than you at this point. But we will put out to you when we can and as fast as we can, every bit of information that we can, we can share with you.
I do, I do think that it would have been nice if we would have had some public hearings before the millage language was approved, but, but as the supervisor had mentioned, that a bit circumvents the process. It makes assumptions that this board would be approving the millage language and deciding to put it on the ballot. If you had those public hearings saying, hey, this is what's going on, it basically is putting the horse ahead of the cart. But we know that we need to make that information available now that the decision, assuming the board votes, because you very well could say, we aren't going to put this on the ballot tonight. Assuming you vote to the affirmative, you know, that that information must be distributed to the residents. And in talking with our legal counsel, who speaks with the legal counsel for the, the bridge company, I think we're confident that we can host these public hearings within the next two to three weeks. So that would be our goal. And obviously, we would get that information out to the residents about when those public hearings are going to be taking place, as soon as we have definitive dates. There had also been some comments tonight about how we're going to get additional information out. We are going to try to use every avenue we have possible and available to us to get information out to the residents. That includes Facebook, our website, distribute FAQs, you know, to make sure the residents are advised of what's going on and answer some common questions. Print media, Grozeal Grand, and also, like we did with the other millage request, put together a video of commonly asked questions that we can run on cable TV, so that residents have multiple ways to access that information. During these public hearings, information will be able to be provided, and the township will be able to address, hopefully, specific questions that you have. There are a lot of them that were mentioned tonight. Although, as was mentioned earlier, specifics about the toll bridge's finances, because of that non-disclosure, we're going to have a hard time addressing that. And that's at their request, in case this doesn't work out. They don't want to be compromised in any other negotiations that might, they might have with any potential suitors. So we have to be aware of that. There have been a variety of, I want to make the residents aware of some knowns that we do have and what has kind of driven this decision. What we do know is the township is going to experience a Wayne County Bridge closure at some point in the next couple of years. There are two specific projects that are going to be taking place on the Free Bridge or the Wayne County Bridge. One is underwater work and one is above water work. We're not aware at this point whether the underwater work will require a full closure, but we, with, I think, a pretty high level of accuracy, can anticipate or anticipate that the above water work that is necessary on the Free Bridge will necessitate a closure, and that's on the superstructure. What else we know? When the Wayne County Bridge closes, we know that the toll bridge in its current posted capacity of 7.5 tons cannot address the needs of our community. The limit is not something that we can bring trash trucks across, fuel, groceries. It's primarily just, you know, vehicular traffic, standard vehicular traffic. Without the purchase by the township and upgrades and repairs to increase the capacity in that bridge, there is no doubt that there will be a significant disruption in the quality of lives of our residents. And that is one of the reasons that we need to make these public hearings available to the residents, so they understand what that choice is, what that impact would be if this program does not move forward, or the purchase does not move forward. Second, as far as the timing goes, there has been some criticism of the timing and approval of the ballot question. With the knowledge that we have regarding the timing of the Wayne County Bridge, work that will be taking place in the next, I think, two to two and a half years, it's essential that we move quickly in our efforts to do our best, if it is approved by the residents, to procure, procure the bridge, engineer the necessary work that is required to increase the tonnage, permit it, and contract for that work. The next opportunity, if we didn't move forward in November, to put this question on the ballot, would end up being in May of 2025. I think at that point, there were some serious concerns that we would miss that window to have the toll bridge ready to satisfy the needs of the community when and if that Wayne County Bridge goes down for repairs. So there was some concern with regards to that. As far as concern about whether this would be operated as a toll bridge, the, all the financials that we have put together, the pro forma anticipates this being operated as a toll bridge. And the language that has been provided to the residents speaks to that. You can see the differential between the millage rate, if it's a toll bridge, versus it not being a toll bridge. And I think that there would be a significant amount of concerns among those residents, you know, about equity and use and affordability when it comes to operating it as a bridge solely funded through millages. So I think that the intent was to try to minimize the impact to the entire population by operating in its current format, which is a toll bridge.
And I'm just going to jump in here. Along those lines of toll bridge versus non-toll bridge, obviously, where are you going to get the money to maintain the bridge, pay for its daily operation, et cetera? If it isn't through tolls, it's got to be through taxes. If we were to do it without tolls, there would be a toll bridge millage for as long as we own the bridge. By using the tolls, once we get the upgrades done and the debt paid off, it will just be the tolls, and there won't be any millage.
Just to make sure that the residents, I hope the residents are confident in the work that's been done to date with regards to researching this. But I want to emphasize some of the different consultants and outside organizations that we brought in to review the condition of the bridge, the finances of the bridge, the legalities of owning a bridge. We've utilized Miller Canfield, they're our bond attorneys. Hardesty and Hanover are our bridge engineers. Rosati, Schultz, Jopich, and Ambroster are our general legal counsel. Bezinski and Company are our financial advisors, and O'Keefe has been our financial analyst organization. We've put in a significant amount of resources into making sure that, you know, we had the right consultants in place to review this, this option, and make sure that any decision was vetted and that we had a fair level of confidence when it came to proposing this even to the residents, that we could deliver on what was being asked, which is to own and operate this bridge in a way that it works for our residents and our residents' needs. The township has also involved our state legislators, Jamie Churches and Darren Camilleri, to develop and adopt legislation allowing the township to operate this as a toll bridge, because that was the business model that we were reviewing. So that work has taken place, along with coordination with MTA and MDOT, because they had input on the legislation that was adopted by the state of Michigan. So through the township and its consultants' cumulative efforts, we feel properly positioned to have a complete understanding of past, present, and future and current toll bridge operations and finances, maintenance and operation needs and costs of the bridge if the township were to purchase the asset, the current condition of the bridge, short and long-term capital costs and necessary upgrades to address both short-term and long-term needs of the township, cost to construct a new bridge in this location, financing options, short and long-term legal concerns and resolutions to a variety of complexities of owning and operating this unique asset. And this is just a short list of the things that were reviewed. Through the consultants and this information that was generated, we've been provided a lot of information that has allowed us to craft the question that's going to be posed to the residents in November if it is approved this evening. The question, as designed, takes into consideration purchase prices, capital needs, revenue projections, maintenance costs, operation costs, debt service, engineering, and many other factors. Fifth, the proposal was born from resident concern. It is worth noting that part of the master plan process, which is currently ongoing, is public outreach. This outreach was conducted to gauge residents' needs, wants, and concerns within their community. Of the 1,146 respondents to various surveys as part of that master plan process, 55% of the respondents mentioned bridges as the top type of challenge that Grozeal faces. In addition to that, four out of 10 comments mentioned improvements that they would like to see being those on our bridges and access. It is very obviously a major source of anxiety for the residents. Our responsibility and local government is to develop public policy that is responsive to residents' concerns, to give you the choice and the information to make informed decisions. This very obviously is a concern of our residents and an option to address the concerns that they have voiced. Sixth, Grozeal Township, over the past 36 months, has received over $9,848,000 in grants and outside revenue. This doesn't include COVID dollars or police forfeiture funds. That's almost $10 million in less than 36 months. The township has shown not only an interest in obtaining alternative funding other than local tax resources, but also success in obtaining these funds. It would be the intent to pursue any outside funding with this operation as well. Last, we as a township are not permitted to advocate any one way on a ballot request. It is our responsibility to educate the public on the aspects of a question, so that you can make an educated decision on what is best for you, your family, and household when you choose how to vote. The township is committed to providing you this information on this very important topic. Stay tuned for dates and times in which we will announce shortly with regards to scheduled public hearings.
And along with that, we are working on, hopefully, being able to say in more detail things that you have asked tonight. We have to, we have to talk to the seller to give us permission to say certain things. One thing I don't know that you, that you mentioned, you mentioned the financials being under the confidentiality agreement. The engineering report is under the confidentiality agreement. So, you know, we can't get into specifics on that, at least not right now. So, Derek, did you have?
I'm done. I apologize for that.
No, no.
That was really good, Derek, actually.
I just wanted to bring up...
I want, I want Mr. Naidoo, our treasurer, to speak on taxes, which everybody, obviously, is concerned about. David, would you...
Well, yeah, the first comment I want to make is that the upgrades...
Yeah, make sure you lean into the mic, so people hear this.
The upgrades that need to be made to the pay, to the pay bridge.
Wait until, yeah, yeah.
It's not to actually operate the pay bridge as it is today. It's to operate as it would if or when the county bridge is out of commission. We need that, we need to be able to get food, gas, emergency vehicles across that bridge. But with the millage, and I hope you can all see what's up there.
Can you make that just a little bigger for the guys with no eyes like me? Thanks, sir.
Going back to 2022, the town, the total township millage was 15.54 mils. In 2023, it was 15.99 mils. 2024, it drops down to, dropped down to 12.92 mils. And in 2025, assuming that this proposal passes, the millage, the total millage will go back up to 15.53528, including the millage required under this bond proposal, which is a couple of dollars less than it was in 2022. And this is the total. And then in 2026, it will go down to 14.53 mils. And that's where it's scheduled to remain for the duration. Now, that's based on the millages that we have today, assuming renewals on anything that comes up to, that expires, if it's a renewable millage. So the addition of this, the millage for this proposal that we will vote on, on the language that we will vote on, results in an increase in the total millage rate from 2024 to 2025. And from that point on, it'll be less than the millage that was levied in 2022 and years prior. So, so there's no, and I think, I know Jamison expressed a desire to, at a minimum, we've got to keep the millage rate at or near where it is today. And that's what we've done.
Yes, you can. So, and I just want to add to the taxes. This is something that we have been doing on every project that we have brought in here. On the wastewater treatment plant, the mill, the millage that you were paying was always a part of our planning, and we were able to keep it down. When we did the roads, the same thing. There was no increase to you over the 2022. It always, that's, that's one thing that we've tried to build into this, because we, just like you, nobody wants to spend, pay more taxes. The question is, is the project worth it? And in this case, is the project worth it to keep the taxes the same, basically, than they, actually lower than what they were in 2022, 2023, and still have that project done? We've had our roads done, we've had our sewer work done, we can have this bridge done and still not actually have an increase in our, our total taxes. And, and I mean, that's something that we, we absolutely looked at and is very important to me and to this board, that millage rate that you people have to pay.
We have to pay.
For supervisor. So one thing I'm noticing, a lot of people taking a picture of this graphic, and I promise you, those pictures aren't going to turn out very good. It is a document that we can make available. We can make copies and make sure that you can, and this will obviously be part of the education process as well.
Correct.
So I don't want you to feel like you have to rely on, you know, I do the same thing, and then you open it up and you're like, eh, you know, can't really see it. I just wanted to address the question of the timeline as it relates to elections and why we are doing this tonight with the deadline tomorrow. In the state of Michigan, we can't just willy-nilly call elections when we have ballot questions in mind. We have to follow a state calendar of elections. The next election possibility for us after November is in May. And the concern is that by May, the bridge may no longer be for sale to us, or we may no longer have an exclusivity agreement. So there was a big push since last June, over a year ago, to put all of this information together so that we could reach a deadline for an election. And it, we had two closed meetings in the last two weeks when we got back the reports that we'd been waiting for. All of these, I'd like to say to you, it's been nothing but moving parts since day one. And there's just been one thing after another, and Derek and Jim and the board have followed a time... have followed a timeline, ticking off all of the different advisors, pieces of information that we needed, even going to the state legislature to put all these things in place before we can actually formulate the question to the public, is this something we can do? And so, the deadline for the November election just so happens to be tomorrow at 4:00 PM. And this was the meeting we had available to us. And so, this is not in an effort to blindside anybody. I would like to say that in voting for this today, the board will be putting this decision firmly into the hands of the voting taxpayers. The resident taxpayers will make this decision. And the township will provide as much information as we possibly can to the residents prior to making that decision. And I would say, watch your township social media. Watch the newspapers. There will be pamphlets put out. We've done this for many other things. But in an election cycle, we cannot advocate. So, our goal is to make sure that you do get factual information that allows you, just like this millage financing graphic that the treasurer put together, that will help you decide what you want the future of your community and access to your community to look like. And, and I think the, you know, my career as a township board member is very soon to be over. I shouldn't be smiling while I say that. But after 27 years, this is the toughest decision the board has ever been in a position to make. And I do not believe this is a decision for seven board members to make. This is a decision for seven board members to put into the hands of the people in, in their community, the resident taxpayers who will live and, suffer the consequences of that decision. So, that being said, I just also want to close by saying that we do, the board has always looked at this as, can this bridge service the community if it's the only bridge that we have? And I think, you know, we all wish the county would look at the county bridge in the same way. But we, as a board, our obligation to the residents is to provide continuity so that we can continue to access the mainland and, and have the mainland access us. Because there's a lot of services on the mainland that we depend on. It's not just about cars and trucks and getting to work in the morning. It's about a lot of other things that we need to provide for. And, and that is, that is the responsibility that's been put on us. So, thank you.
Jim, I have a few comments, if I may. Thanks. So, if the board votes this down tonight, parrot what our clerk said, we take the decision away from you, right? We're like, nope, we're not doing it. Now, the voters don't get to decide. There's no millage language and there's no opportunity to purchase the toll bridge. So, we're not asking any voter to approve a $59 million bond project. We're asking voters to decide if you want to purchase a $59 million bond project. And before we brought it to you, like Derek had said and laid out much better than I could have, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a cold, so I sound terrible. We needed to make sure it was, it was even viable, right? Like, we couldn't just hand you a, a pile of impossible-to-cover debts and all that kind of stuff, right? We needed to make sure this really worked and that it was even something Groseal could afford in any way, shape, or form. And our research has indicated that it can in the specific format that we've put together, the millage and bond language. I walked through the Groseal History Museum parking lot the other day as I was considering this. And they've got some signs up there of how people used to get to Groseal, which was like cable ferries and trains and steamers. And in my opinion, if we don't have two bridges, we're going to be putting up some cable ferries. Like, we have to have a way to get trucks onto Groseal regularly, right? Not just for building houses, but for hauling out trash, hauling out sludge from the wastewater treatment plants, bringing in groceries, bringing in food, bringing in cement for projects. And unfortunately, I, and I'm, I'm not trying to advocate, I guess, but I don't, I don't see another way to do it. So, the bond does include the purchase of the bridge and upgrading it to meet the community's needs. So, it's not just the purchase price. And we can't discuss the purchase price with you yet. And then I think Derek's done a good job of explaining the timeline. I know a couple of the other comments brought up was, you know, have we looked into federal and state funding and grants and things like that? And there's definitely been talks with other echelons of government about how we can get assistance with this, which would offset your bond, right? So, then we could either make the decision to pay it off early, reduce the millage. It would be a cost savings to the taxpayers. But projects in the 20, 30, 40, 50 million dollar range require congressional budget earmarks, right? So, the $20 million Wayne County was given for the free bridge is in the Michigan congressional budget. So, it's difficult to get Congress just to be like, yep, we'll give you $10 million. Like, you know, it has to go to the floor, it has to be budgeted. So, I really, I, I understand that it's been quiet because we've been doing all of this in meeting, public meetings, but still in meetings. And there hasn't been a lot of advertising going on. But what we needed to do was make sure this was even possible before we brought it to you. So, and of course, we're going to have hearings. We're going to talk. And I'll always tell as much information I possibly can. I think every other member of this board will too, so.
Yeah, I think just to add one thing to what Jameson just said is that there may well be state, federal grants available. But you can't get a grant for something you don't own. So, we couldn't apply for a grant. We couldn't apply for a grant six months ago because we didn't have a bridge to get the grant for. But trust me, there, there will be applications for grants wherever we can get them.
Or, or just asking for appropriations like the 20 million that was, got for the, the, the pay, for the free bridge, just getting something like that, going to your representative and saying, can we, can we get some money for a, for this project? That, but again, as David emphasized, can't be done until we actually own the, own the asset. So, as of today, we can't ask for a thing. So.
Jim, what is it?
Joe's, Joe's next.
Go ahead, Joe. You sure?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First off, I want to thank everybody coming here tonight. I appreciate, I like seeing people here. Now, this isn't arrogance, it's just a fact. There's some of us running unopposed. We're probably going to be here. I'm probably going to be sitting in them middle seat in November. And I owe this to you right now. You see, there's a lot of things we couldn't do. This young lady sitting in front of me here is not only our negotiator, but she would be defending us in a lawsuit if we started talking about what we knew. And obviously, that's because if we don't purchase it, Mr. Smoke and his negotiations would be hampered and we'd get hit with the bill. So, we have to do, number one, what's legal, what's correct. And it's such a litigious society that we understand we have to do things correctly. Now, with that said, the reason I think I owe this to you because I will be sitting in that seat and you know how I vote. As Mr. Carmison stated, I was a police chief for 10 years. And the gentleman in the back, Doug and I, the police chief, have an excellent working relationship. I still voted no on the police language for the millage. You know where my heart is at, but my heart's for Groseal. My votes don't change because I was a police chief for the police department. My votes don't change for the people because everything I did as a police chief was for the people. And everything in the last three and a half years, you can look at my history and all my votes. It's all about values, it's all about principle, and those don't change. Now, again, with that, we couldn't tell you, you understand that. What we can tell you now is that everything took longer than anticipated, the engineering and our auditors getting our numbers. That took longer than that was anticipated. As Clerk O'Connor said, there's a deadline. We have to meet that deadline. And unfortunately, the deadline's tomorrow. And what I saw, and, and again, with Kristen here, who's been our negotiator, I have full trust in the people that we have hired. Obviously, that they're true, that their opinion means something. And they're really the best of the best for those groups. And I owe it to you to say I'm going to vote yes tonight because what that does, Jameson just explained it. We will not give you a chance to vote on this if we vote no. It's over. And if the gentleman that owns the toll bridge puts it out, things can happen. What really convinced me is if you look at these numbers that are up here, and Dave explained it. If you look at these numbers, just like some of the other millages that came up, and we waited a year before they levied it, what we also can do when I become supervisor, I'm going to look at some things with the board, obviously. There's certain millages that you can't touch because they're connected to a bond. If you're connected to loaning, or not loaning money, we're obviously, we're getting the money. We're not loaning the money out, we're not. So, anything that's connected to a bond, we can't mess with. You have to levy the full amount. I'm going to ask the board to look at other amounts if it, if it's, if it goes a little bit off here and we need more money to the non-essential. And, and I'm sorry, I, I get it. I, I came from the police department, but I have to look at the police, I have to look at the fire, and I look at DPS. Of course, we want police, we want fire, we want our toilets flushing. We get that. But I'm just going to promise you this, that in the best interests of you, that's the way I vote. And that's why I'm voting yes tonight because we were handcuffed. You were handcuffed, and I feel bad for that. Because without communication, people really get lit up. If you notice, and I'm not on Facebook, and there's many reasons. When I become the supervisor, I will be. We're going to have our own each month. But the point is, when you don't communicate with people, that lights them up more than anything. And we had a legal obligation to not say anything and to do what we had to do and how we had to do it. And that timeline came and we just finished it. And as, I'm sorry, I think it was Jim or Uta even said, we've been in, in sessions this week and last week with Kristen here, and we had to do it this way. So, that is the reason why I'm voting yes. It's now going to be in your hands. And I saw no other way. I, I mean, I'm not going to say, oh, believe me, you know, you have politicians every day, state, federal, local, oh, believe me. But the point is, I can't see any other way. And I think that Jameson brought some excellent points up, everybody on the board. And you brought up excellent questions to us. You brought the questions that even Derek then could answer and in these public meetings. And I tell you this, after six weeks, if we can't get to you the facts, shame on us. Then, then I'll stand right at that podium and say, shame on us, and I'm involved in it. If we can't get you to all the facts to make a sound decision when you go to vote and you vote your conscience, yes or no. And if we can't do that in six weeks, then we got some major problems. So, I anticipate, and I've asked Jim and the board in a previous meeting with Kristen, actually, that can we get a professional organization possibly to get this out somehow, to do it, to make it correct and have the public meetings and have the questions that you have answered? So, I know I'm kind of laboring this, but I'm going to be here. And what do you have in life? You only have a couple of things, and one is your integrity. And in three and a half years, all of you know how I voted. It's on record. And I'm not going to stop that. And I'm not going to change my ways. And I'm not going to change what I think about Groseal. So, it is what it is, but I owe that to you because I'm still going to be here. So, thank you.
Other comments?
The, the issue, I think, is going to be fairly placed before the voters. I believe if you make a fair presentation based on fact and you allow the voters what you've done tonight to make the questions so that we can meet your concerns. Last week, I spent a day just coming up with questions that I would have if I were there. We're taxpayers. Mr. Malvesto, I'm only a few years younger than you are, but I've lived here all my life. I look at this community, I refer to it as the Groseal experience. Eight years ago, I ran for the township board and I had four principals when we looked at a project. Principal number one was, do we need it? Principal number two was, how do we pay for it? Principal number three, how do we maintain it? And principal number four, is there a better way? Is there a cheaper way of doing that? I still adhere to that philosophy today. You've heard about what we've done with our due diligence. We had a legal opinion that says, yes, it is possible with the right legislation for a township, a government, to own a bridge. Nobody wanted to just go ahead and assume that we could do that. Because not only do you have to have the ability, the legal opinion that tells you that you can, you have to have the process. And the process included going to our state representative, Jamie Churches, and our state senator, Darren Camilleri, and have them sponsor and negotiate and push legislation through the House and then the Senate. And then it could be signed by the governor that would allow us to do this. We could have a huge fundraiser and do whatever we want, but if we can't own that bridge, that's a waste of time. That was the first part of the due diligence. Can we do that? The second question then, very simply put, is what do we do with the bridge to get the best possible resolution for all of us? It's not you, it's not us, it's for the entire community. And that meant going through and having a detailed engineering study. We saw a preliminary study. We've also seen, Jim, I think you told me there's a 1,500-page study out there if we wanted to take a look at.
That's the pictures, yes.
And a lot of pictures.
Part of our report.
But 1,500 pages, three reams of paper. And you look at that to find out what the condition of a bridge that was originally designed to hold, as someone noted earlier, much lighter traffic. What does it take to upgrade that bridge? First of all, what kind of condition is it in? And second of all, what does it take to upgrade it so it can handle the cement, the concrete haulers, the garbage trucks, the Kroger truck, all of those things that come onto this island that we don't think about? What does it take to do that? And that engineering study came in several weeks ago and gave us options and an idea of what we could do and what it would cost. And as Greg Carmison noted, some sections of that bridge are 30 years old or younger. We're not looking at a bridge that opened in November of 2, of 1913, if my memory serves me correct. And that, we have a bridge that is now 111 years old. So, the engineering study gave us an idea as to what we can do, an analysis as to what we can do with the upgrades on this bridge. But there's three legs to that stool, and the last one is finance. How do you pay for it? People on the south end of the island are going to say, why should I vote for a millage and also pay a toll on that? Look at the alternatives to not having a second bridge or allowing a third party to come in and not maintain that bridge or do the upgrades that are necessary. You could have a third party come in here and say, all right, I want to buy the bridge. Mr. Smoke, they turned you down. I've got money and I want to do this. Oh, by the way, citizens, here's your new toll, toll rates. That worries me. When you look at something as simple as Harson's Island, I think it's $25 for a vehicle. That's incredible. I don't know how people do that that live there. I look at what we have here. Why should I, on the south end of the island, vote for this? Because it's insurance. It's an insurance policy. You have insurance on your automobiles. You have insurance on your home. You go to a financial consultant planner to help you plan for your retirement. If the bridge goes down, how do you get across to go to work for those of you that work off the island? Some thought is to go ahead and build a Bailey Bridge, have that available. That doesn't happen overnight. The second thing is, what do we do with this bridge? The second thing is, what do we do with this bridge? How do we maintain it? It's with a combination of tolls and a combination with taxes, property taxes. Greg Carmison has noted that the significant sections of this passageway are founded on earth. There is not going to be the 11 spans or 11 piers that we have with Wayne County Bridge. That's not going to happen. Somebody else has said on Facebook, let's talk about just building a new bridge. The latest numbers I see for a replacement for the toll bridge is 180 million dollars. 180 million dollars. So the first thought is, is that you go ahead and you say, we're going to have Wayne County, force Wayne County to do this. You can't force Wayne County to do that. They have an obligation to reasonably maintain roads. They don't have an obligation to buy a bridge. They don't have an obligation to come in and say, this is what we're going to do to you and give you a brand-new bridge. I want you to think about what the alternatives are. I hate taxes. I pay a lot of money in taxes, as does every person in this room and every person on this board. Probably the only one who doesn't pay Grozeal taxes is our council over there, and she's happy about that. But I also look at what the alternatives are. A third party comes in, doesn't put money into the bridge for the upgrades, and just keeps it at vehicular traffic at a rate that they want to impose. There were a lot of questions here about grants and how we can have Wayne County take care of this. I don't know that Wayne County is going to continue to do the work for a bridge right now that we want to purchase and assist with that when there have been almost 50 million dollars put into the community in the last several years. 20 million dollar checks sitting down in the lobby, a facsimile of that, for work on the county bridge, 15 million dollars, it's already been done. Two and a half million dollars for the bridge connecting Upper Hickory Mesa Island. Two and a half million dollars for the bridge that goes over Parkway and West River. We look at 8.3 million dollars for the bridge over the canal on Meridian. And suddenly, we're knocking on the door at 50 million dollars. There are three, and I'm not an apologist for Wayne County, but there are 300 bridges and 3,000 miles of roads. And we have roughly 10,700 people that live here, 9,000 electors, people that get out and vote. How much more do we really think we're going to have? Jim has spent a lot of time going to Debbie Dengel's office and saying, we buy this? Are we going to be precluded from getting future grants? The answer was no. We can't do anything until you, until you own it. Jim talked to Jamie Church's office. Are we precluded if we buy the bridge from having resources in the form of grants and other considerations from the state and federal? Same answer. No, it's not. But we can't do anything until you buy a bridge. You go to Darren Camilleri, the same question, the same answer. No. When I look at what our alternatives are, it scares the heck out of me to have a third party come in and say, this is what you're going to pay to cross this bridge, particularly when we know Wayne County has more, a lot more work to do on the so-called Free Bridge. So I ask anybody out there who says no. I think it was Ron that brought up the idea, let's do a, do a Causeway Bridge there. In theory, I think that's possibly a good idea. The reality is, you have to deal with Congress and you have to deal with Coast Guard. You have to do a whole lot of agencies because it's a navigable body of water, whether it's used or not. So we can look at those solutions, but when I went to law school, they had eight questions on the bar exam. And whether you like this or you don't, the eight questions out of the 200 that were asked were, what is the least worst alternative? I don't like the township owning a bridge. I don't understand what the next alternative is. And I'm not asking you one way or another, but just to think long and hard about what the consequences are. I'm not trying to scare anybody. I've lived here 66 years and I hope to make it another couple of decades because I'd like to see the end of that millage. But at the end of the day, it's about, do we have control over our destiny? Or do we have somebody else that does, that's a private enterprise or a corporation or another governmental entity? Please look at the information, and Joe is correct when we talk about six weeks. You can get a lot of thoughts on Facebook. My God, there's a lot of thoughts here. There are over 200 comments. And Greg, I really, I really liked the idea that you were following up on some of those things and making it clear. And you've been on top of this project. One of the first things I got from you was a binder about this thick and what was going on with bridges. I learned more about bridges than I ever wanted to until this came up. But think about what your facts are, please, before you say yes or no. And if you have a better alternative, let us know. Let the supervisor know. Call into the clerk's office or email them. But when I look at 180 million dollars for that, that's a lot of money. And we're not going to get it from the state. We're not going to get it from the federal. That's all I have to say.
Kyle, did you have something?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, this is a hard decision for me. I will, I will thank everyone that's come out here tonight. I think everyone spoke very well. A lot of us on the board, I feel, have had time to absorb this information. Sitting here, I never, I never sit here thinking, what's it like for me? I always think about what it's, what it's like for someone out there. You all just got the news that we had a couple of weeks to absorb, and it's not good news. The public communication up to this point had been that we'd be able to do this with, just by tolls on its own. We're learning we can't do that in order to meet the timelines that we're seeing, you know? That's hard information to take in. I would be unhappy too if I were in the audience. That's something that I've tried to take into account. I, I will be voting yes on this tonight, the overall language. I, I will offer an amendment to try to get something on the record that I tried to put forward to the board. Uh, it's just, I, you know, it's yes or, or there's no choice at all, basically, for the voters. And in that sense, I think the voters do deserve a choice. And I also believe in voting yes, I'd be able to best advocate to get some of the, the relief that we could possibly get at the county, state, or federal level if, if this were to pass. But saying that, I, I made an argument, and I'd like to advance it here, that we should put up ballot language that, that, that only includes the, that does not include any levies. Um, I believe that we should at least give the people a chance to vote on whether they want to own a bridge or not before we ask them to make a vote on upgrades as well. I've understood what the rest of the board, or a lot of the rest of the board feels, that that's not fair to people to own something without a way to make it work the way that you need to. But that's the, the argument that I was trying to advance. So with that in mind, that's, that's an amendment I'd like to offer to the language. I can offer specific language to it if anyone wants to support it, but if not, I completely understand.
I don't know how that'd be an amendment rather than a separate action item.
I amend the language on the bond proposal.
He's making, he's making a motion to amend the language of the motion. And so you would, one, need to make the motion to amend and get the board to approve. And, and a second.
I need a second for the motion.
And then you would then make your, make your case. And then the board would vote on whether or not to add the amendment to the resolution.
Sure.
Kyle, to clarify, you're saying you would want to amend the language for the purchase of the bridge by itself?
Yeah, I would, I would like to, so I'll, I'll make the motion. Thank you, Clerk of Law, for, for helping me clarify what I was saying there. So I will make the motion to reduce the amount of, of, uh, said, said in the bond proposal from 59 million down to 25 million. The estimated levies down to zero. And the proposed average millages over time down to 1.6246.
You're going to need to repeat that one more time.
Sure. So my motion within the resolution is to change wherever it says 59,740,000 down to 25 million. Reduce the estimated millage to be levied to zero. And to, um, to reduce the anticipated revenues options with the average of 3.30666 mils down to 1.6246 mils.
Is everybody clear on that language? Is there a second to that motion?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask again, is there a second to that motion? There's no second to that motion, so the motion fails.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and I will leave it there. That was the argument I made. I, I did not win that argument. But just so you know, this hasn't been easy up here. It's not like we all came here and said, this is what we want to do. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth about how to approach this. This is the option before us, and there's no other option beyond this. My understanding is the exclusivity agreement will not be extended. There will not be a new board that the purchaser or the, the owner will want to negotiate with. We, we've, we've had a year. This is what we've come up with. This is our chance. So that's my understanding of where we're at. Thank you all.
Okay. I think we've heard from everybody. Anybody else have any other? All right, so we have a, a recommendation for a resolution. I do not want to read the whole resolution again if I don't have to.
I was going to ask you not to, Jim.
I know that. No, I, that I, it's a matter of, is it enough? And correct me if I'm wrong here. We're, we're going, we have a resolution before us for the Grozeal Toll Bridge Bond Proposal. The, uh, and it is exactly as I previously read it. So.
Before we vote, I would just like to say one thing.
Go ahead, Uda.
I think it's a nice closure. Every board member here today has expressed how much deep thought they've went through this process. And they have made some wonderfully compelling arguments. This has not been an easy decision for anybody on this board for a whole number of reasons. And Kyle, I, I just want to say how much I appreciate the thought and energy you've put into this. And to make that effort to show that even at this last moment before voting on a resolution, a board member has an opportunity to make an amendment. You know, that is how democracy works. And that is how, I, I admire how this board has worked over the last four years in essence. So thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. With, with the resolution, we have, we will have a roll call vote on it. Kyle?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Uda?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Jameson?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the resolution passes.
And now it's in the hands of, of everybody.
And thank, thank you, and we, I, I promise you, we will get you information as fast as we can get it to you. And there will be, there definitely will be meetings as well as written word going out. So thank you all. Thank you all from, that are here for that. It's nice to see and to hear from you. All right, with that, let's see where we are as we shuffle the numbers tonight. I believe it's action item number three.
Yes.
And that is, Joe, that is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jim. Uh, for seeking approval to purchase a patrol vehicle with equipment.
Support.
Patrol vehicle 16-4 has been decommissioned after being struck, making 16-4 unrepairable and a complete insurance loss. 2025 black Ford Explorer in production and being held for the department by Gornow Ford. Traveler's Insurance has reimbursed us for the total loss of 16-4 in the amount of 16,356 dollars. Grozeal Police Department is looking for approval to use federal forfeiture to purchase the new 46,995 and the equipment cost estimated at 14,514.2 cents. Um, there is no financial impact, so you know, due to forfeiture funds. Now, if I may explain this.
That we need a support?
I'm sorry, did you get a?
Support.
Uh, support?
We have a support. We have a support. I'm just losing my voice.
I didn't hear you. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Actually, one thing, Dave, before you ask. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Finish up.
Yeah, no, I want to explain something. With the forfeiture program, anytime there is an insurance claim and there is reimbursement from an insurance company and it was purchased originally with forfeiture money out of a certain account, because there's three of them, it actually has to go back to that account. So all they're doing is, obviously, they're minusing what the insurance is giving us back, 16,356, from the total, and it's just coming from a different account. So they're using that. It has to be done this way. It's a clerical issue that has to be done, and it's actually a legal issue. So go ahead.
That was my question.
Yeah, that's exactly it. I already got that. So I wanted to explain that to people. So that's it. It, it works out. Everything, uh, the numbers are correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I, I have a comment. Um, I, I've been asked, why are you spending all this money buying a new vehicle? Joe and a lot of the police department is very humble. They, they, they don't talk about challenges that they have, uh, things that are going on. The reason this vehicle is being bought is because another vehicle was struck by a drunk, a drunk driver. An officer was hurt. Uh, these, these are the risks that police put themselves at for us every day. This is not coming out of, out of tax funding. It's coming out of forfeiture funds, which we're very lucky to have this year. And I just wanted to state that, that, you know, this is an example of, of what the police do for us all the time. Um, and, and for me, it's not an example of, of where we need to be saving money.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Other, other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, uh, seeking approval to purchase a patrol vehicle with equipment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You get a new car. Thank you. Okay. Number four. Joe, you're up again.
Yes, sir. To approve the hire of Wendy, and I apologize, I hope I get this last name correct, Robledo Castillo for the Police Department Confidential Administrative Secretary position.
Second.
The Grozeal Police Department will have an opening for the Grozeal Police Department Confidential Administrative Secretary on September 2nd, 2024. Current Administrative Secretary Jessica Hancock announced her last day will be September 2nd, '24. To fill the upcoming open position, the police administration published a job description, received 23 applications, interviewed 10, tested four within the scope of the position with the police commission, interviewed the remaining two applicants. The police commission recommended on July 16th, '24 to hire Ms. Castillo for the open administrative secretary position pending completing pre-hire requirements and final township board approval. Ms. Castillo has completed past pre-hire medical screening and background investigation.
Comments or questions? I think Joe pretty well summed it all up.
Yep.
So we have a motion to approve the hire of Wendy Rebelle, Rebelit, Rebledo Castillo for Police Department Confidential Administrative Secretary position. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. And I think absolutely they were doing this right, so we can get Wendy in to have Jessica work with her. All right. And, uh, number five. David, that is yours, I believe.
Yeah. Grozeal Township Board, I'd like to make a motion, Grozeal Township Board hereby approves a purchase totaling $26,010.50 for the annual cost of software and the one-time purchase of hardware to support meter reading activities by the Grozeal Township DPS Department.
Support.
Thank you. The, the hardware and software that we're currently using to read the water meters is no longer supported. And it's just time to upgrade the entire, the entire system so that we can make sure we've got accurate software to give us accurate readings on the, on the water meters.
Yeah, just one quick correction. Not necessarily accurate. What we have right now is accurate. It's just a matter of, uh, the support will no longer be provided after a, a certain date that's shortly upcoming.
They may do apply.
No problem. No problem. And, and so it's necessary for us to purchase this to, to be able to continue to operate our, our reader system and also have the support necessary for that. It is a budgeted item. It was considered for our budget and incorporated in our budget for this year. So it's something that we had anticipated. It's not an unanticipated expense.
Hey, Derek, is that, that's just at the, that's here, that's at.
Hey, Derek, is that... That's just at the... That's here... That's at DPS, right? There's nothing happening at the actual meters?
Correct. So, the meter in your home emits a radio frequency. We drive around and pick up those radio frequencies. What we're replacing is the equipment that actually comes and it picks it up from your homes. Doesn't go into your home. It just pulls the radio signal from your meter.
Okay.
And that is the reason you wanted to stick with the Neptune?
Correct. It's a Neptune product to match with the Neptune meters.
You were not replacing the whole.
Correct.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion that the Groseal Township Board hereby approves a purchase totaling twenty-six thousand, ten dollars and fifty cents for the annual cost of software and the one-time purchase of hardware to support meter reading activities by the Groseal Township DPS Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you for that. And with that, we end our action items for tonight, which brings us back to public comment on any topic.
Tom has his hand up.
Well, I'm getting to that. Three minutes and name and address, same as before. Tom, go ahead.
Tom Elvesto, eighty-fourty-nine Berkshire Drive. Two things. Number one, I'm really curious as to who drafted the language of that motion. If you could provide that for us at the next meeting.
Which motion are we talking?
For the bridge.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like... I'm curious as to who drafted that language. We have an issue coming up. It's under construction right now, and it's going to affect my neighborhood specifically as well as others. And that's the new construction at the elementary school on Park Lane. Church Road and Park Lane is a... Is not a controlled intersection. And when that construction is done, we... Everybody has seen the traffic parked up and down Meridian, especially I've noticed it when schools out. But all that traffic is now going to be funneled down into Church and Park Lane. It's going to be a nightmare. Everybody knows that Church Road is an exceptionally narrow road. It really isn't suitable for handling bus traffic. Township did as much as possible to improve the conditions, but it's still a narrow road. And when you get to that intersection between buses turning on and off in that intersection, and now you're going to have more than double the cars that will be using that intersection. That traffic is, I'm sure, is going to somehow find its way into the subdivisions, which is going to be providing an inconvenience at least to the homeowners in that area. The fact that, yeah, the voters approved, voted for and approved the schools, you know, the money for the schools, that's understandable. But the... What's going to take place there with all that traffic is going to make it... Even though they're putting in a special drive to accommodate that traffic, it still has to come in and it has to go out, which means that when it hits the intersection of Park Lane and Church and it wants to turn either left or right, unless that's a controlled intersection, and what I mean by controlled, I'm talking about a stoplight. I think that needs to be considered before this project is completed, because it's going to turn out to be a real nightmare, not only for the people who are dropping your children off and picking them up, the school bus drivers, and again, the inconvenience to the neighborhoods. That traffic has got to go someplace, and it's not going to all funnel through that intersection. So, I realize it's a road. They're public roads. They don't belong to township. But that needs to be addressed before that project is completed, or it's going to be a nightmare. Joe, Chief Porcelli, excuse me. You may have a source of that, you know, to go to that could study that intersection and see if there's any sort of a proposal, you know, things that could be done moving forward. And you're going to be the supervisor anyways. I'm going to be calling on you regardless. But again, it's going to be a real nightmare there. And I think the fact that you live there, Joe, and the fact that you live in that area, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And it would be better to address it prior to completion, when it all starts, than to have, you know, the first month and a half, a real cluster. So, that's just my comment. Hope you take it seriously. And Chief, you making notes?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was... I'm writing while you're talking.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Tom, we will look into that. Thank you. Other comments? Yes.
Jennifer Belucki, one-nine-five-one-six, Park Lane. I just wanted to make some comments about the proposal to purchase a toll bridge. First of all, I appreciate everybody here. I know you've all worked very diligently to try to keep us as updated as you could. Tonight was very helpful. The information that was given tonight was very helpful, so I appreciate it. Just a couple of comments, like this chart, just in preparation of the upcoming public meetings that you're going to be having. Derek did a great job of covering everything, but I think you're going to have residents say, this is really interesting because my 2024 tax bill did not go down. I don't think anybody had a lower tax bill, so they're going to look at this and they're going to ask that question. So, that's just something I think you might want to be prepared to respond to. The other thing, I don't think Derek mentioned in the various ways you're going to communicate to the public when the meetings will be held. I don't think you mentioned Code Red. To the extent that you can use Code Red, I think that would be very helpful for people, because I think most people are on Code Red, probably a larger percentage than are on, you know, Facebook and some of the other ways that we communicate. As a person who did not vote for the road millage, primarily because I lived in a township for thirty-some years, and it frustrates me that we're in a township that Wayne County is not taking care of our roads like they should, I'm wondering if there is a way to use the road millage monies to help cover some of the maintenance of the bridge. I don't know how that works, if it's only a halfway mark or something. But I would think even for those residents who voted yes on the road millage, that they would be open to the idea. Of course, at the point they voted yes, they had no idea we would be faced with this, right? And so, maybe the residents would be okay, and not that it's going to come back up to a vote to them, but if the existing board or the future board can consider redirecting those road millage dollars towards the bridge, I think that might be a good use of that. And I just appreciate you guys not making the decision. I think it could have been within your purview to just decide to buy the bridge, and I think that would not have sat very well with people. So, I appreciate everybody giving that power back to the people, you know, and let us, you know, like you were saying, let us get informed. Let's make an informed decision, and everyone can decide whether they're going to vote yes or no. And then, just a little funny in closing, as a lifelong Republican, I cannot believe that the only Democrat on the board is the one who is suggesting a cheaper alternative. So, I'm sure that some of the other ones on the board, who I know are very intelligent and very well reasoned, have a reason why they did not second Mr. DeBose's recommendation. But I was just sitting there thinking, well, there you go, you know? You just never know. I thought it was a great idea. It was like, yeah, that's a great idea, right? Let's just get it first and then worry about the rest of it later. So, thank you, Kyle, for that attempt, anyway.
Thank you.
At saving us some tax dollars upfront. Thanks.
Thank you. No, you can't. We need you on the microphone. So, the people at home can... Do we have a handheld? Hang on a second, Ron.
Ron, I think we've got... Oh.
My name is Ron Growroad. I think this was a real good presentation. There was probably, I don't know, I couldn't count everybody that, you know, presented their views and opinions. Unfortunately, that's probably only thirty or forty people out of almost ten thousand people on the island. I don't know why people come to me and say, what's going on? Because I've backed away a little bit on it. This is kind of an important issue. And I think somehow you guys got to reach out to the rest of the people out here, because some people got some real, real crazy ideas on what's going on. And I think, you know, all this sounds pretty good, to be honest with you. Never heard me say that, right?
Who is that up there?
Huh? What's that?
I said, who is that up there?
No, but I mean, it, you know, it makes sense. If we can do it without, you know, beating the daylights out of the taxpayers, okay? And a lot of people really don't understand that. And then, when they, you know, can't go to Kroger's and buy toilet paper because there's no way of getting it over here, you know, then they're going to be frustrated. It's going to be the same old thing. So, I don't know how you would do that to... You know, you're going to put out information. Quite honestly, I'm not sure that a lot of people are going to really, really, really understand it, you know, the way it should be understood. And I don't know. I...
That is... That is going to be our challenge.
Yeah, it's going to be a big challenge. So, you know, you can hand out flyers to initiate it, or I'll volunteer something. But I think that's a big consideration for people to really, really, really understand, you know, what the ramifications is, you know, if we don't do something. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Ron. Greg?
Greg Carmazin, two-one-two-two, East River. I wanted to say to trustee Nubose, I applaud you on that proposal. I think that was a good alternative. I'm fearful that there's a short period of time to explain this. It's very complicated. And I think that that was a good effort to give taxpayers an opportunity to vote for this without raising their taxes. But nonetheless, we are where we are, and I understand there's a tight deadline. And I also recognize that trustee Porcelli made some comments about, you know, the possibility of evaluating the township's budget and the possibility of looking at that when the new board comes into office. So, in the meantime, though, I would say you've got quite a challenge to explain this to the public. I, you know, have had conversations over the weekend, past week. A lot of us have read the social media comments. There's a tremendous amount of misunderstanding and misinformation out there. And there is, obviously, as Clerk O'Connor mentioned, I think that there's a limit to what we can do here. You can do as a board in terms of what was called express advocacy. You know, you have to put out facts and all that. But I will say that I personally will be doing express advocacy for this because I think if we don't have two bridges and we don't have two bridges that can handle truck traffic, it's a complete disaster, okay? We're going to look at financial loss of everybody's property values in this island. It's going to reduce public safety. It's going to reduce quality of life. It is something that this township has to prioritize at the highest level. And if there's anyone else that's interested in doing express advocacy on this, talk to me. Contact me, because I will be doing it. We got to get this done, and I know that you on the board are limited in what you can say about this. But we have to do this. This is existential to Groseal. And I just want to say that I wish we had more time. I understand that's not the board's choice. But, you know, we still have enough time to make this decision. We still have a time as a community to understand this, and we still have a time to make a decision that's going to benefit this community for generations to come. So, I applaud you again on tonight and putting on the ballot. And I hope that the citizens will support it, and I personally will be advocating for its passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Bill?
Bill, East River Road. I'd like to take a brief moment to comment on Ron's thoughts about talking to the public and all of the misinformation or the way people are thinking. A presentation might be made if someone were to audit the video of what has been done here tonight. Derek had a wonderful presentation. You gave some clear thoughts. And we could put it on the television. It might be a little bit long, but this is what Tom and Dick and Harry had to say, so to speak. And it runs over and over again. And you might find a way on the webpage or with Groseal Grand to say, hey, go look at this thing, you see? And if you could put it somewhere where they could see it at three o'clock in the morning because they woke up thinking about it or whenever, it's there to be had. That's it.
Thank you, Bill. And I will say that we just talked about that this afternoon, about putting something out on our station. So, it's all the things that we have to think about and do. I think we have to use absolutely every means possible to get the word out. Because even with doing everything, we know there's still going to be a lot of people who aren't going to know about this until they walk into the vote, because they just don't look at any of those. But that doesn't mean you don't try. So, good, good, good comment. Thank you. Other comments? I cannot... Is there anybody behind there? Okay, with... With that, we'll move on to the reports. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We'll keep it short. August sixth primary election, we had a whopping thirty-seven percent voter turnout. But that's not unusual for a primary election, especially with so many uncontested races. It just... But it did provide an excellent opportunity for our election team to prepare and get geared up for the onslaught of November. I'd like to thank Tate and Amy and Gail, who assisted Brian in Elena's absence at all levels of service, especially Gail, who kind of came in and got all the precinct care packages and information boxes set up. I also want to thank all of our, well, Brian and I in particular, all of our precinct inspectors, our election inspectors. We had a huge team. And it seems like elections, even though the election itself was a small one, need more and more people to actually run the election. And so, we had election inspectors in the precinct polling places. We had election inspectors nine days of early voting here. We had three counting boards. We had two receiving boards at the end of the night. And still, it was a long night. I don't think we left here. I think Brian might have left here by eleven-thirty, all things said and done. So, you know, it's a big effort, but I think a number of people came up afterwards and having participated, especially Tate, our young college kid helping out. A lot of people just don't realize how much goes into running an election, how deep the level of detail is. And that makes you secure in that process. You know, it's paper, it's electronic, it's two parties, you know, people from all parties coming together. It really is... Well, it's my passion, as you know, and it's something that is so important to our democracy. So, we reconvene for that election in November. I'm half happy, half sad to say it'll be my last. But that usually is just a monster of an election. And I wish all our candidates a good candidate season. And Brian, unless you have something to add, that's it for the Clerk's report.
Thank you very much, Uda. David?
Thank you. Summer tax bills, just a reminder, summer tax bills are due September fourteenth. Business has been brisk. And we have collected to date just under fifteen percent of the summer tax bill. That will change when we get the payments from mortgage companies that are payable through escrow accounts. And DPS, the DPS Commission meeting meets tomorrow evening at seven o'clock. And DPS, DPS Commission meeting meets tomorrow evening at 7:00 here in the boardroom. And the Airport Commerce Park Commission, their next meeting is August 19th, a week from tonight, at 6:00 here in the boardroom. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, David. Trustee reports. Kyle?
Sure. I sit on the Planning Commission. We met on August 5th to discuss a new airport hangar at near Island Athletics, which was unanimously approved, so that'll be coming before the board soon. We meet on an as-needed basis, and there is no plan immediately for the Planning Commission to meet. I will conclude my report there. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Regarding Greenways and Open Space, I'm pleased to report that Enzo has completed his Eagle Scout project. There is a page on Facebook. It reflects the work that was done, as well as some of the many people that were involved, students and parents that were supervisors. I've asked Enzo and I'm asking the Supervisor to put the presentation on at our next board meeting so that he could come up and have five minutes or three minutes and explain what he did and how well he did it. And that is all I have for Greenways Open Space. I will deliver the fire report at our next monthly meeting because it has been a long night already. A bit of housekeeping here. The 22nd Annual Smithsonian Run is coming up on this Saturday, August 17. 8:30 is the one-mile run. 9:00 AM is the 5K or 3.1 mile run, starting on the Groseal High School West entrance, the parking. And if you want to register, come in early, or you can go online and register at runsignup.com. Steve Sims was a tremendous educator. He unfortunately passed away in 2003 rather suddenly, unexpectedly. He's described by people who knew him and worked with him as beloved, and certainly at age 46, had so many more years to offer materials and guidance for the students. So, what has transpired since his passing is that there is the Steve Sims Leadership Scholarship Fund. And this year, they are going to be awarding one young man and one young lady $2,500 for scholarships for college. And it is rather exciting to report, and I've referred to it as the Groseal Experience, but $56,000 has been raised to date over those 22 years to send students to college. And that's just a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. And thank you for, the community for being so involved. If you want to do it online, again, runsignup.com or show up there and bring your money. It's appreciated and is for a great cause. It is administered by Give, so you're going to be able to do some good for the community. And finally, my congratulations to the four Republicans, Margaret Shelton, Michelle Bartlett, Mark Mills, and Bill Heil for their accomplishment, and to my friend, the Democrat, Kyle DeBose. Congratulations, and I wish everybody well in November. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Carl. I don't think that we...
Oh, I have one other thing.
Well, you, I'm sorry.
This is very personal. And happy birthday to you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. Thank you.
A young 39 yesterday, as I recall.
The problem is, I'm aging it two years a year instead of one.
It gets better in November.
Your term costs you eight, huh? Thank you. We should also, I would also just interject here to congratulate Jamison and Joe and Kevin Flavin on...
Well, it's been a tough race, Jim.
Yeah, you guys, you guys put a lot into it, and it worked out for you. With that, Jamison, it's a year up.
All right. So, I think, to piggyback on Ron's comments, I think public meetings and flyers go a long ways, but it's really conversations that create understanding, right? So, if you've watched tonight's presentation and you understand, I hope that you will take time to discuss it with your neighbors and friends and maybe coworkers that you know here on the island, about what your position and your knowledge of the bridge situation is, right? Because that's really where people are going to generate understanding, is face-to-face talking to folks, right? I'm on Facebook. You're right. It's a, it's an interesting place to live. So, that said, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is going to meet this Thursday. However, I will be absent. And then, if there is a zoning board of appeal or a zoning board appeal, they will meet the 27th this month, but there hasn't yet been one declared. Meet as needed, like Kyle mentioned about planning. The only other thing I would mention is September 14th is the Step Up Swim. It'll take place at Groseal Yacht Club and on Hickory Island. It's a big fundraising event where several members of, well, several organizations and the community will do a 10-kilometer swim or 6.2 miles from Groseal Yacht Club out to Detroit Light with the intent of raising funds in support of Step Up Foundation, which helps build advocacy for veterans who have suffered blast wave injuries, my, TBI, and PTSD as a result of their service. Step Up runs super lean. There's some other veterans organizations that are consuming significant amounts of their funds in their administration, and I don't even think the people administering Step Up receive any actual pay from it. So, 100%, I shouldn't say 100%, there are some admin costs, but most of the money donated to Step Up makes it to the point of service. So, that's all I have, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you, Jamison. And Joe?
Good evening. I sit on the Police Commission, and I know it's getting late, so there is really nothing from the Police Commission that you haven't already heard, but I do have some good news. I was contacted by the liaison to the CEO's office at Wayne County, and she wanted to speak with me. And I'm going to tell you the truth. At first, I thought, I wasn't sure if this was real because obviously, as you know, I've had some issues with the DPS Director of Wayne County. We, I guess we bump heads. Well, unfortunately, I mean, I really, you know, it's, it is what it is. She advised me, no longer either with the department right now, with this week or next week. So, they're getting a new DPS Director, and she has guaranteed me we will be getting a public meeting. We've been working on this, and I have to say, I want to thank Kyle. He was with me. I started. He jumped on, helped me out. Ms. Shelton out there, Mr. Carmazin, are you still here? Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you there. But he has been helping out for the last couple of years, and she has promised me. It's going to be a good relationship, I believe, much better than the last one. And I don't know who it is yet, but she's told me a new one will be coming in. She will be getting ahold of Jim to schedule a, you might call it a town hall or a public hearing, all the questions for the county bridge. She said that they can answer, they will. And I just thought it was great news. I thought that we're moving forward with the new board. I wanted to start fresh with Wayne County. Obviously, individuals and different townships here and even some cities have been having issues. They bump heads, and that's, that's the way politics in Wayne County works, and that's the way anything works for different entities. But I think we're going to start fresh. This is going to be good for all of us. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Good news, good news. Just as a side on that, Andy will be moving over as an assistant to Warren Havens.
Oh, lovely. I meant great.
Yeah, he's going to, he's going to be right in there with the deputy.
Oh, good for him. Seriously, I'm glad that...
But, yeah, and they will be naming the new, the new head shortly.
Good.
Derek, do you have anything else?
Just really quickly, I want to thank everybody, as many of you already have tonight, for the conversation. I think public involvement makes for really good public policy, and thank you for your comments and your interest in tonight's various topics. I think it all makes the solution a much more comprehensive, complete solution that we all come up with together. So, that's all I have the rest of the evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Very quickly, the DDA meeting, which would normally be Thursday, August 22nd, has been moved to August 29th. Here, it'll be here in the boardroom, but it has been moved one week. And just a reminder that Congresswoman Dingell and the EPA and Eagle folks are having a Downriver Town Hall at the Westfield Center in Trenton next, or, I'm sorry, this Thursday, the August 15th at 7:00 PM. So, if you happen to go to the last one they did, it really was very informative. If you're interested in what's happening along the shoreline, especially in Trenton, I would, I would encourage you to go to that. And with that...
Like to make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.